The meeting is now called to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallowhan?
Here.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Here.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parzak?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press in the Cape Cod County Herald on January 13, 2020. Will everyone please rise to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, just let the record reflect that we did do some last-minute changes to the agenda for the work session in light of COVID-19 and measures that are strongly being suggested by both the CDC, the State Health Department, and the County Health Department. So we have pared down our work session and we're going to deal with items that need to be dealt with today, other things we're going to be putting on hold. Also, moving forward, we are going to, we've got a couple of weeks to figure this out, we will come up with a way to meet that does, where we can meet as a governing body, and it will meet with all the guidelines of the Open Public Meetings Act and so on. At this point, that we have not decided how we're going to do that, but fortunately, our next public meeting was not scheduled for three weeks from today, so we do have time, so that information will be forthcoming. So, that being said, I suggest we deal with the recreation and tourism issues, natural resources, and then go into public safety, because I think the majority of our discussion today is going to be of a public safety nature. So, that being said, initially, we were going to have the tourism director get into these four special events and explain them to us. Most of them, I think literally every one of them are annual events, so they're things that the town is familiar with, that she was ready to move forward for approval. So every councilman is going to be provided with a full application and just be ready to vote on them at the next meeting. If you've got any questions, you can direct them to Jenny via email. But again, I'll reiterate, they are all ones that happen every year, so they should go through without much of an issue. Jen, you have a look on your face, and if that is, you all right?
Looking for the rec. director.
Oh, we, all of the department heads, we told them not to come.
Okay.
The only department heads that are here are public safety, and then we asked Jenny to be here as public information officer, should she have to do any kind of a press release as a result of any business we conduct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sorry that you did not know that, my apologies.
No worries.
But this was actually on the fly. We did this at 11 o'clock this morning, is when we said, okay, we need to make this meeting shorter. So, that's recreation. The other thing that we were going to do today, and in light of what's happening around us, the open space applications have been delayed till June 15th. So there's no more sense of expediency on that, so Mark did not have to be here to explain any of that. Natural resources, we were going to have Dr. Farrell do that beach and bay report. We have told him that, in light of everything going on, not to be here today, and we will reschedule that. His report will be online, and we'll post that, and we'll also blast that out in every way that we can. Festival of lights, we really don't have any information, not till August, no sense of expediency there. Anything from recreation and tourism or natural resources?
Excuse me, the proposed date, or the date that we hear the festival of lights is scheduled is July 18.
Okay, and that hasn't changed?
Not that I've heard.
Okay. Anything, natural resources?
No, thank you for explaining that. Dr. Farrell was excited to come here today, but however, we will have another way. I think you were talking about probably doing a video with him and putting it on our website, because he was going to report on the beach and the bay surveys, which are very fascinating and very important, and it's best coming from him, so I think we're talking about trying to get him to do it.
If that's something where he wants to appear here in chambers and do it, but the one thing, and that was more for the next meeting, we're going to have the budget presentation done that way by the CFO. If it's something that we can get Dr. Farrell to do, that'd be wonderful, based on his schedule, and he doesn't even have to come here to do it. He can sit in his office and do it.
Yeah, so I had a conversation with him. He did make that offer, either to do it here in chambers, or using his television station at the college to record that and place it on our website. So whatever the pleasure of the council is with respect to getting that information out.
I think it makes sense. If he can do it without traveling and seeing anybody, he does it at his TV station, provides us with a link, and we push the link out.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, because it's him that, he knows the most about it, and you listen to him. I can't, couldn't even begin to touch these two surveys. But again, it will be both, the beach is done twice a year, so that will be in there, and the bay survey is done once a year, so that he's combining the two of them into this report. Other than that, Natural Resources has another meeting scheduled, the 27th of March. We have, at our last meeting, which was February 14th, we talked about indigenous plant list, and we talked about the Princeton hydro presentation, which is coming up for resolution, and we talked about the LOMAX at the last meeting. So all of it is already out here to keep you all updated.
Okay. And you do know that, moving forward, most meetings had suggested they be canceled? We shouldn't be having meetings, and if we are having meetings, moving forward, they're going to have to be telephonic or in some way, shape, or form. We can't be meeting in groups of six and eight people. I mean, that's coming down from the state. We've got to figure out another way to meet, unless something is of really extreme importance, perhaps the chair can somehow communicate with the administrator and filter information down that way, but we need to strongly discourage meetings till we get through this.
I did not know that, so now we're not having a natural resource meeting on the 27th of March.
We're canceling the planning board meeting, we're going to be canceling the zoning board meeting, we're moving, like, moving forward with all of this, and with that being a mere, what, 10 days away, I can't imagine that we aren't, things I think are perhaps going to get a little bit worse before they get better. So, that being said, anything more, natural resources, or anything, Bob, on either, on anything?
Just quickly, on the meetings, understood that there is a directive to that effect, but we're also looking at technology like Google Hangouts, where we can possibly have meetings with, without each other being in the same room. So, we are exploring that, and I think it will be up and running shortly, but that's something that we're certainly looking at.
So that should be, and so you're, we wouldn't be canceling, I should, let me, I should clarify, we're canceling the in-person meetings. Soon as we figure out a way to do things electronically and have that figured out, we could, we'll be moving forward with things.
I don't know if it's worth reaching out to the school, but my kids were in school today on, on Google, taking all their classes from home.
So we can figure that out?
It's a Google.
Google Hangout?
Not Google Hangout, Google Meeting, I think. Okay, maybe meetings allows for a larger audience. Hangouts, you can, hangout, you can actually, I think it's up to 12? It's a smaller group? My understanding is their whole class is on with the teacher. Right.
People classroom?
Yeah. Henry called it meeting, but.
Okay.
Skype classroom, yeah. Maybe it is Hangout.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'm, because of the current restrictions, I'm currently taking a class on Zoom, and I'm finding it very useful, and also, in the terms of zoning and planning, they could present plans at the same time that everyone who would be in the room would be on Zoom.
Okay. If there's somebody, if you, if, if there's a particular software, like what you're saying, that somebody is familiar with, if they want to talk to Bob, and there's, if somebody's got an idea what is best for us moving forward, just please share that with the administrator. And like I said, we have, we've got a little bit of time here to set it up, so if that's something that works, we'll see what works best for us, what is most user-friendly, and, you know, we'd like, you're talking about plans and so on and so forth with zoning and construction office, things of that nature to keep, so we can look at that. Okay?
Yeah, I think Zoom is pretty much the cutting edge.
Okay.
And it's very easy to use. It'd be very easy for people to log into. I don't think you'd have any difficulty, and I think the technology's out there that we can keep the borough running.
Okay, great. So, we're going to move right on to public safety. I did ask Bob to just give us a statement on the court, what has come down from AOC.
The only statement is that the Supreme Court had made a determination and a directive that municipal courts across the state of New Jersey would be closed to sometime in May. I don't remember the specific date, but certainly for the next six weeks and beyond, our municipal court will be not operating. Fortunately, we don't have a heavy caseload, caseload over the winter, and so therefore, it won't be problematic. I did have a conversation with our court administrator, and she feels that it will not be a problem for Stone Harbor, given our caseload over the winter. But I believe it was May 22nd, but I'm not sure of the directive from the Supreme Court.
Okay. Fire Department report and the Police Department report, we can just put online, and that'll just be part of our minutes moving forward. Lifeguard captain, at this point, we had said not necessary for him to attend this meeting, so I'm going to ask JT Lacoste to come up from the Office of Emergency Management, and we can get into some details about the measures we've been taking here in town, and I'm going to ask that Fire Chief Stanford and that the police chief remain here just as we go through this, should there be any questions, and if we need any guidance from you. So.
Thank you very much. Just bear with me, this is a very fluid situation. I mean, things that were happening this morning have already been changed as of this afternoon. So I'll just start off, the borough's official response to this situation with COVID-19 was actually launched on March 6th, when Mayor Davies-Dunour sought and secured a first-in-county action meeting with the county health officer Kevin Thomas. At that time, an ad hoc task force was created, which consisted of the mayor, Councilman Frank Dallowhan, Administrator Bob Smith, myself, Director of Public Works Grant Russ, Chief of Police Tom Shudda, and Fire Chief Roger Stanford, Jenny Olson as well. So on Tuesday, March 10th, the task force met with Health Officer Thomas to solidify a scientifically-based approach to this public health threat. On Thursday, March 12th, we met again to review current methodologies and practices, and began the rough sketch of this plan. On the same date, I was named the leader of the task force with the assistance of Administrator Smith. I want to just say that we have been way ahead of everybody else on this. We had already started discussing cancellations last week, before these types of things were even on the radar of other municipalities. And I think Mayor, as well as Mr. Smith, are to be absolutely commended on this, and I think that this is going to end up paying dividends for us, because we are so far ahead of the curve. At that time, an infectious disease preparedness and response plan was prepared by Mr. Smith. I'm going to touch on some of the highlights. Most of the stuff that you are going to hear are things that you have heard directly from CDC, and are things that we all know that we need to do. There are some borough-specific things. I'll also have the police chief and the fire chief just real quickly touch on what they are doing. But again, I just want everybody to know that we are really ahead of the curve on this. So, first and foremost, you have your hygiene and etiquette, as well as your environmental controls. Hygiene and etiquette. We are making sure that our borough employees are well of how to properly wash hands, how to properly cough, sneeze, all of those types of things. And again, this is all stuff that's readily available on CDC's website. There are interactive videos that you can watch, that we have made available to borough employees. When it comes to our environmental controls, we've closed Borough Hall. I think that's a very smart move. I think now's the time to do it. For the members of the public, it is an indefinite closure at this time. So we are maintaining regular janitorial practices, even though we are closed. Borough Hall, other borough spaces are being cleaned twice a day. We have tons of signage in place. We have hand sanitizer readily available. We're trying to think outside the box, propping doors open, things of that nature. Now, one of the biggest things that we do have concerns with, as most people do, is employees who are not feeling well coming to work. So we have developed a workplace plan with flexibility and separation, where we are going to be exploring further, allowing employees to simply work from home. I believe there's a resolution to vote today on some software that will allow us to do that. Staggering of shifts, allowing certain employees to work certain days, things of that nature. I was just made aware that, I believe until further notice, we're going to be suspending fire inspections. Chief Stanford can, will talk about the things that we're doing at the firehouse also to implement those things. The biggest thing with this virus and its spread is through close personal contact, sneezing, coughing, things of that nature. We need to do what we can to keep people away from each other for at least the next 14 days, is really what I think now we're starting to hear from the administration in Washington. I think we're doing a good job of that. I think this is great. We're setting an example right here, right now. But if we have the ability to allow employees to work from home, I think that we should strongly consider that and look into doing that, and we are. So, one of the concerns that we do have is employees that are sick or feeling under the weather coming to work. It is a great concern, so we are going to be developing a policy that allows them to, well, we have developed it, that allows them to use sick time, if we're able to determine that it is, the symptoms are, could be related to COVID-19, that would allow them to not have to use personal sick time, and we would use it some type of administrative time. It is important for the department heads to make sure that if we do incur any costs, monetary costs, losses as a result of this current state of emergency, to keep track of those losses, so we can possibly submit to the state for reimbursement. I do, again, so in compliance with Governor Murphy's executive order, all borough activities are canceled indefinitely. In person, I believe Mayor touched on that. We will definitely be doing what we can to be able to hold meetings via Skype, Zoom, things of that nature, and fortunately, we do have some time until the next meeting to be able to do that. I also want to touch on the executive order that was issued. I have been receiving some phone calls from members of the Chamber of Commerce with a little bit of confusion on that. In addition to what I'm going to read, I do know that shopping malls has just been added by the governor as of about maybe 35, 40 minutes ago. So, all gatherings of persons in the state of New Jersey shall be limited to 50 persons or fewer, with limited exceptions. We're already doing that. Cancelled the shiver, you know, we're doing what we can to do that. All public-private parochial preschool programs in elementary, secondary schools, including charter schools, will be closed as of yesterday, and will, will remain closed, excuse me, tomorrow, and will remain closed as long as this order is in effect. So there is no end game right now. The schools are closed indefinitely. Commissioner of Education will continue to work with each public-private parochial school to ensure they're able to continue their education through appropriate home instructions, and as we heard from Mr. Krafcheck, it sounds like that's happening right now. Casinos, concert venues, nightclubs, racetracks, gyms, fitness centers, classes, movie theaters, performing arts centers will be closed beginning on Monday, and will remain, again, as long as this order's in effect. Now, this is where some confusion arose. All other non-essential, and that's the key term, recreational and entertainment businesses must cease daily operations from 8:00 PM until 5:00 AM. All restaurants establishments with or without a liquor license or limited brewery license are limited to offering delivery and/or takeout services only. So we have two establishments that are open right now. They are only permitted, there is no in-house dining permitted. They can simply do takeout or delivery. So I don't know, Chief Stanford, if you, or Chief Shudda, if you want to join me real quickly, so you can just brief council on the measures that the Police Department is taking, and then we'll, we'll take some questions.
Good afternoon. So I also would like to commend the mayor and Mr. Smith on the quick action that's been taken here. We at the Police Department, we had put out our first communication, our personnel on March 3rd, so we were right in lockstep with you. It was, it was really nice to see everyone be on the same page. So, we've been implementing various things since March 3rd, through basic communications back and forth with email and what we call department communications. That's an official written order. We're currently in the process of finalizing a fairly comprehensive policy, which basically puts all of those department communications in one basic document that everyone can go to if they have a question. So one of the things that we, excuse me, one of the things that we modified was our response to medical calls. We basically broke it down into emergent and non-emergent medical calls. Non-emergent medical calls, which we often get a lot of, are sick people. So typically, we would have an officer respond to a non-emergent, non-emergent medical call and have direct contact with the patient. We are telling our personnel, glove up, appropriate PPE, and just make visual contact with that sick person from a distance of six feet or more, and just monitor them, just to make sure that their, their condition doesn't deteriorate to a cardiac, or, you know, difficulty breathing, something like that. Upon arrival of EMS, the police are then instructed to leave. Just go outside the house and just wait. If they're needed to re-enter, you know, based on what EMS is requesting, then we certainly will. But that's for non-emergent. Emergent medical calls, cardiac, things like that, they're going in, they're gloving up, all PPE, that's appropriate, and assisting as needed until EMS gets there. Once EMS gets there, if they don't need any assistance, they're instructed to leave and just stay outside the residence. We've also modified our basic general calls for service, which we get a lot of, just general calls for service. Anything that's not emergent, you know, say a stolen bike, things of that nature, something very minor, we're just looking to take the information over the phone from, from the caller, and that's basically falls in lockstep with the other county police departments. So basically, they will not, the Police Department will not go out to any call unless it involves a crime in progress, the need for on-scene investigation, or the collection of evidence. Everything else will be over the phone, and then we'll have to follow up at a later time, once this all blows over, hopefully. We've also modified the assignments of officers to specific patrol cars. It might be a little difficult to understand the way I explain it. We have basically three frontline cars that roll all the time. We have four squads with three people on a squad. So the sergeant, the sergeant, the oldest patrolman, and the junior patrolman are working on a squad. The sergeant, all sergeants are assigned to one car, we'll just call it car number one. All senior people are assigned to car number two, junior people are assigned to car number three. We have enough cars where, so basically, four people are sharing car one, four sharing car two, four sharing car three. We have, have enough cars where we could limit that from four to two now. So, myself and JT are assigned to one car, Mr. Smith, Mr. Kraft are assigned another car, and that's the only car they're allowed, allowed to ride in, barring, you know, there's a problem with maintenance or something like that. But they're instructed, they have to wipe it down, sanitize it before and at the end of the shift, and just be thoughtful of their partner, basically. We, of course, emphasize social distancing at the station, which is kind of difficult at a police department, but, you know, I think people are trying to, are kind of falling into line with it now. You know, you walk down that hallway, and everyone kind of scoots to the side. It's kind of comical in a way. We've also begun to modify detective schedules. There's certain positions in the PD, of course, that, you know, we can do this with, the secretaries, the captain and myself, to the chagrin of the captain, actually, and the detectives, where we can have, we have two detectives, one work one day, one work another, so they're not there on the same day. The same with the captain. I broke it to him yesterday that if this in fact goes through with working from home, he will basically be, be working from home, and I will be here. He does not like that, but we can definitely set him up with the, the technology to do that, and he's, he actually does that all the time anyway, so it's, it's just not a, it's not unusual for him. He just won't be here all the time. Once again, we began preparing for the work at home capability. We actually requested this morning to move up the effective date of the Class Twos that we would have coming, returning from last year, and that is with the mindset of, God forbid, something happens where we start to lose officers. We can have these Class Twos fill in right away. Rather than make their effective date a month from now, we'll make it tonight, but we won't bring them on until they're absolutely needed. Sick time, like everyone, everyone else in the borough, we basically told them, which is strange for us, if you're sick, don't come in, which, you know, from the Police Department end, you know, typically, it's, you know, you have a little sniffle or something, you're coming in. You know, even if it's a little more than that, typically people come in, but we're trying to emphasize that, and no problems with that so far. Of course, we've emphasized constant hand washing and the use of PPE, that's personal protective equipment, for those that don't know. The common doors to all the hallways and offices are propped open to, to limit exposure of touching handles and things, and I, just recently, there's, there's a daily briefing given by the state police every morning at 9:15 over the internet. It's a conference call, and it's basically the whole state comes from the rock, and they just give us updates on what's, what's going on.
Great, thank you, Chief.
Chief Stanford, if you could step forward, please, and just brief council?
Okay. As you can imagine, EMS is on the front line of this. We don't really have a choice whether we go or not. We have been receiving lots of information from the state, obviously, on how to handle this. I, today, matter of fact, 15 minutes ago, instituted a new policy with our, our fire and EMS. Basically, we're asking for, only to have our two EMTs at the firehouse, with social distancing, so they're not to be in the same room. Myself and Jim Bailey will no longer be coming in. We're trying to keep ourselves healthy, we're working from home. I'll be coming in to check on, I will not be going to check on them, but as needed, I will respond. Our medical director has been very on top of this. Every, every municipality, every EMS squad needs a medical director. We have one that is a director for hundreds of EMS agencies, so we get daily updates from him. The most scary thing is, he's had two squads where they've transported people to the hospital with no symptoms that tested positive. So now we've started to use PPE on every EMS call. Luckily, I went to the county today and got another box of masks, so we're in good shape with our N95 masks. But as you can imagine, it creates quite, quite a consternation, I would say, with our EMS providers. My other issue with our EMS providers is that most of them work in multiple jurisdictions. So, in my policy, it says if you have been exposed, obviously, in your other jurisdiction, you're not coming to Stone Harbor. You may very well see EMS providers in this county go out of service. New York City, I was telling Bob yesterday, I'm sure the numbers have changed, had 100 firefighters exposed in New York City. They're now quarantined and out of service. Baltimore's had the same. So, I'm trying best I can to not infect or have us exposed, because once we're exposed, we are out of service. So for the fire department's side, all fire alarms and carbon dioxide alarms are going to be handled by one person. Instead of having 25 firefighters respond, we're going to have one person, myself or the EMS crew, will go to the scene, check it out. If there's no fire, we're good. If there's a fire, then obviously they need to call us, but we won't be coming for true emergencies for the duration. The hardest thing with the fire department is, in my email to them, was to get away from the impulse to come to the firehouse. We're all firemen, we'd like to be together, we like to know what's going on. I've canceled all drills, all training, but I still couldn't see on Thursday night having 20 guys there hanging out. We're trying to avoid that at the best we can. That's, that's where we stand. We're doing the best we can, we're hoping. I can say, and I, no one likes to say this in this, in my business, but it's been very, very quiet for the county. I believe people are getting the message, so they're not calling the ambulance for these, what we would call routine, non-emergency situations, but county-wide, it's happened, and the fire calls are now county-wide. So, everybody's home. You know, the president just gave out his address, saying he wants everybody to stay home 15 days to try to stop this, so hopefully, when they're home, we'll, we'll see what happens.
And just real quickly, tell council that, what is going on with the emergency medical dispatching, and what the training that the dispatchers are receiving at the county prior to you?
When this first came out, the, the state was very quick to put out a emergency medical dispatch procedure that people are calling in. There were certain questions to ask on, on the phone. Have you been out of the country, have shorter breath, and then we were notified for those calls, to use appropriate measures, PPE for that call. That seems to be, everybody, I could have, you could have it with no symptoms, so really, basically, it's now everybody needs to, to follow the procedures.
So they're still asking those questions, but however, that doesn't change your response. You'll just have a little more information when you arrive.
We are now told, the fire department's told NREMSS that when you go to a We are now told, the fire department's told NREM that when you go to a scene, you're asking the person from six feet away, do you have any symptoms? Have you, are you quarantined? One question that we asked on, we had a conference call with County OEM yesterday, and the question was, is there a database of people that are quarantined? And because of HIPAA, they can't tell us who's quarantined, so they had a police officer in Bergen County who went to a call, and after interacting, the person said, oh, by the way, I'm quarantined. And now that police officer's quarantined. So we're trying, if we can, in the farthest way, ask the person, are you quarantined? Anybody in your family? Our EMS coordinator for the county is quarantined in his house with his wife. So it, it's starting to hit closer to home with us, so just a matter of time. Anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
We have our reverse 911. Can that be used in any way to those people that have signed up for it? I know, I get it on my phone. Is there some common sense message that could be placed on that?
I think this is not, it's something that we uniquely have to give a message out. I think if, unless you live in a cave with no internet or TV, that it, every 15 minutes, you're getting inundated with the information. We are working, there's a committee working with our voter list for older people.
What we're trying to do, and I was going to be bringing that up, is we're trying to identify any seniors in town who may be isolated in some way, whether they're, they're not on a computer, they're not anybody who really watches a lot of TV, or they're just somebody who's alone and isolated, to make sure that somebody is staying in touch with them. So the only list we really have, so to speak, is the voter registration rolls. So there is a list that's circulating, and I was going to fill counsel in on it, that if there's anybody on that list you know that no longer lives here, or should be somebody that we're looking at, we want to make sure that we're aware of it, and we'll all have a comprehensive list. And I actually have already even heard from people in town who had, who have said, hey, I volunteer to run out and get groceries for people you identify that may be isolated. So that's something that we started yesterday, getting that list together to get out.
So we are working on that. The reverse 911 is a, is a great tool for limited flooding events for Stone Harbor. I don't know if it would work for, I don't know what the message would even be. We could certainly, we have the, we have the option. I mean, it's, it's easy to do. It's just a, when we find a message you want to send to them.
Well, just so there's no panic, that we're maybe honestly bragging about what you're doing, just in a short message, that we are taking the precautions. If you have any questions, blah, blah, blah. But it, I know that, I don't know how many people we have on that, but it seems like a large list that signed up for it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very limited alerting device right now because it, it goes off your home phone.
I get it on my cell.
But that's because you signed up for it. If you didn't sign up for it, you're not going to get the message. JT and I've talked, we wish that we could somehow capture everybody's cellphone, but we can't. You have to actually sign up for it.
With that cell number.
If you have a house phone, yes, we, it'll call your house phone, but in this day and age, people don't have cellphone, house phones, so.
Well, is that something that we would want people to do, to learn how to put it on their phones?
We have, we've blasted out prior.
Even if it's for flood, I know that the reason was for that.
On our website, I mean, it's just about, but JT and I always talk about, and whether it, it's, it's true for this, you can't capture the visitors. Because no one's coming to Stone Harbor, and the first thing they do is sign up for a...
No, I'm not saying that.
But, but we might very well have a lot of residents on there, but I, hopefully, we can, we can work on that.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll explore the options. Obviously, we want to get all this information out, but like Chief said, we're, I'm pretty confident that most people, at least in this municipality, know what it is, but we can definitely look into that and just make sure that everybody is getting it.
Yeah, and I'm not looking for any more alarming. I'm just saying that a friendly voice saying, we are looking, this is what we are doing to help you with this situation, that's all.
A lot of uncertainty, we want people to be calm, and we want people to understand this is a storm, and we're going to weather it. And we've done this before. Nothing like this, but.
Right.
I just, one real quick thing, because I do know that there's, there's been some questions about this, and I, I've gotten stopped on the street, literally, while I'm walking my dog. People want to know, well, how will I know if my neighbor is being quarantined or, or that case? And the fact is, you will not. Because of privacy laws, the only way to know if somebody is being quarantined is if we ask them. And those will be questions that the EMS folks will be asking them. But rest assured, it's not going to change our response. You know, their response to that question, we're still going to be taking universal precautions, protecting ourselves, doing what we can. So regardless, it, it, it really shouldn't matter. We should be treating all of our folks the same, and I, and I have confidence that, that we're going to be doing that. As of right now, I haven't checked my phone since, since I've been up here, but we do not have any confirmed cases in Cape May County. I think we'd be naive to believe that we're not going to at some point.
But we do have, and to expand on what JT said, there's no confirmed cases in Cape May County, however, there's 11 tests that results are being waited. We're waiting on the results of 11 people. Yesterday, that number was eight. So there's three since overnight, and we supposedly will know in a day or two if we do have a case. And the urging from the Health Department is, it does not matter if you have a confirmed case, act like you do. All municipalities, act like you do.
That's correct. And those results, whenever there are confirmed cases, are, are posted to the state Health Department's website. You can actually go on there and look to see how many cases are in each county. So far, fortunately, in South Jersey, we don't have any, but it's, it's only a matter of time. You know, I don't want people to get lured into this false sense of security. We have folks that do travel here, and we welcome our visitors, we love our visitors. So I, I do think that it, it's just a matter of time before it happens.
And in that vein, I have to commend the Chamber of Commerce, because I reached out to them and asked them to strongly consider cancelling the shiver, which they did almost immediately with, almost with no hesitation whatsoever. And then not only have they done that, they've sent out a message to all of their members that went out last night, telling them, do not promote your business, do not promote coming to the shore. Right now, do the exact opposite, discourage people from coming here. And the way that that, that that message was sent, I think, is, is perfect, and we're going to be reposting it on our Facebook page, because it goes against everything those folks do, is promote, 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 and now they have to do the opposite. However, they understand the severity of this situation, and they are here to join us, the Borough of Stone Harbor, and make sure that we keep as many residents safe as we possibly can.
I think the past 48 hours have been very sobering for a lot of people, and I, I really feel that people now are starting to get the message, this is serious. You know, this is not something that's overblown and, you know, media hype, things of that nature. This is serious, and everybody needs to take it seriously. And I'm really starting to get the feeling, especially, as you said, Madam Mayor, with the reaction in the chamber, that people are starting to, to get it. They're starting to get it, so hopefully, that'll, that'll help keep us all safe. Rest assured, we are in constant communication, myself, Mr. Smith, the mayor. I'm getting constant updates through County OEM, which I'm filtering down to the task force, trying to keep everybody informed of what's going on, because again, it is very fluid, things are constantly happening, and I feel like it's probably going to be this way for the next 15, 20 days.
Do you, how, how often do you plan to meet, task force? Is that going to be a daily thing in the immediate future, or?
I, I don't really know that necessary daily meetings, again, because we are trying to keep with this whole, you know, social distancing thing, but I, I don't know that we necessarily need to meet because we are in constant communication. Mr. Smith and I are constantly emailing with the mayor, text messaging back and forth, keeping in, in communication. I'm forwarding everything that I get from County OEM to him, as well as the relevant department heads, the situation reports from the state police. There is a, there is a pretty impressive flow of information that is occurring, so I don't necessarily know that, that meeting is necessary. If it does become necessary, we'll take precautions, maintain our social distancing and stuff like that. And I, I do feel we could do it safely. Right now, I don't really know that it's...
And I feel like we got out ahead of it, and there's policies in place in all the public safety departments. We've got a personnel policy that's going out. The message is clear. Social distancing, stay home. Otherwise, I think that everything is out there that needs to be out there, and we will be monitoring it, other than we're in a holding pattern as to, you know, when do we start seeing we come out the other side? I think right now, it's a matter of you just sit and wait, but I think fortunately, we did get on it, we did get on it quickly. And I do also want to, I want to assure everybody that I, I, we have a really good team in place with JT at OEM and Chief Stanford and Chief Shutt, and with Bob Smith. These, these guys, it was like that, how quickly directives were put out. I have to commend Mr. Smith, he spent the, the entire weekend just making sure that we were, he was ready today to have this personnel directive go out, and we are really, really in good hands here, and I just think the people of Stone Harbor need to know that. We've got top-notch, professional public safety people on this, and we will continue to get as much information out as we can, and we will continue to stay on top of it. So I want to thank you guys for your diligence as we've gotten, you played such a crucial role in getting us where we are now, and, you know, now we'll honker down and hope for the best, but thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else for the work session?
I have a question. Is there a non-governmental group in Stone Harbor that could address the question of our elderly in the town who need to pick up prescriptions, who need to pick up food? Is there any, is there anything like that?
Well, that's one of why we've got this list that we're now, has begun to circulate to identify those folks. Because we, there's no, the only thing I can imagine is perhaps the churches might be aware of someone that's not on those voter registration rolls. So we are, and we're just, if we're hoping too, that by putting word out, somebody will know of somebody that should come on our radar. But like I said earlier, I do have people who have reached out to me, who have said, once we identify those folks, they will do, they'll do pickups from the grocery store, they'll leave it on their front porch, whatever has to happen. But as far as a specific nonprofit group, I don't know of one in particular. I think all of them probably know one, two, you know what I mean? But we are working on that, and hopefully, now the word's going to get out to even more if you know somebody that should be on the borough's radar, that we should be keeping an extra eye on and offering assistance to, that we're here for them. Anybody else? Okay, so what we're going to do, I'm going to, we're going to adjourn, and we're going to, we have to wait till 4:30, correct legally, because that's what we advertised the council meeting for. So we still do have to wait. I don't anticipate the council meeting to be more than a couple minutes to take care of some business. So that being said, I need a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
We're adjourned, we'll be back at 4:30.